We will call the order. The Monday, November 23rd, 2015, regular meeting of the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners. As our custom, we begin with a little silence. Thank you. Mr. Searle, do you have your pledge?
I have my pledge. My pledge is to declare that I am in the United States of America, to be a public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business is our consent agenda. We have three items on a consent agenda. The minutes of November 9th, a budget amendment, care of the securing forward, uh, carryovers from last year, you have our end of October financial. Any changes, additions, deletions to the consent? Okay. I have motion to approve the consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Okay. Next order of business is approving the regular agenda. Any additions, changes, deletions to the regular agenda? I have a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want to oppose, the agenda is approved. Okay, next item will be citizen matters. For me, that we have nobody who wishes to speak under citizen matters tonight. So we move right into whole business number one, which is a revision on the audit for this year, 2014, 2015. The office are going to lead us in that one.
My name is Jay Sharp. I'm the partner and director of audit services for Reeves Associates. We conducted the annual audit for the town of Pittsburgh this year. This is the third year we have conducted that audit. I'm here to present the results of the audit. You should have a brief presentation in front of you. You can follow along with me if you'd like. If there are any questions, feel free to interrupt me during your presentation, or you can wait until the end. I lost up your agenda, so I'll go ahead and get started. Um, turn to page one of the presentation. The leadership team this year, Lynn Reeves is managing partner of the firm. As I said, I was partner in charge of this year's audit. In addition to myself, I had four staff working on the audit during the whole entire process. Uh, the engagement timeline this year, the original contract was approved back in April by the town and then by the LGC a week later. We had a chance to actually come in and do preliminary field work this year. We came in in July and did internal control testing. Final field work was about three weeks earlier than usual. We came in beginning of October and conducted our final financial field work. Um, so you might know, there are two deadlines with the local government commission concerning government audits. Uh, there's a soft deadline in October 31st and then a hard final deadline in December 1st. If you don't get your audit in by December 1st, you get a nice letter from the LGC. Previous years, we've had the audit in, I think, the first or second week of November, well ahead of the final deadline. This week, because, this year, because we did get field work done earlier, we were able to submit it before the October 31st deadline. That being said, the LGC has not gotten to it yet to review. I did contact them last week. It's in process and should be reviewed and approved next week. Um, so the, the financial statements right now are in draft form and waiting for final approval from the local government commission. As I just mentioned, the status of the audit, we've completed our field work and we're just waiting for the local government commission to approve the financial statements. During the process, I'd like to have to report that we received complete cooperation from all the town staff that were involved during the audit process, and I'll speak to that a little bit in a few minutes. Uh, the role of the auditor. You hire us to give an opinion on the financial statements. We plan, assess risk, and perform audit procedures to obtain evidence in order to render that opinion. In addition to that, we are charged in, in order to communicate how the audit went with those charging governance and if there were internal control matters. Management's responsibility. Management is responsible for the financial statements. We prepare the financial statements, but ultimately, management is responsible for them. Management is also responsible for design and implementation of internal controls. So this, the objectives for this year's engagement are much like the last two years. The main objectives are, one, to give an opinion on the town's basic financial statements, to report on considerations of internal control or financial reporting and compliance, and to make observations regarding opportunities for improvements in internal controls and operations. So the reason I'm here today is to tell you about the results of the audit. Having to report, we issued an unmodified opinion on this year's financial statements. That is the best possible opinion the town can receive. There were no financial statement findings. There are a few internal control matters that we'll talk about with the management letter, but for the financial statements, there were no findings. There was one major new pronouncement, uh, this year. This actually regards every town, municipality, county, school board in the state. Gatsby Statement 68 was issued this year, accounting and financial reporting for pensions. Uh, this is a new implementation and it calls the financial statements to restate at the beginning of the year. Uh, every, like I said, every town, county, and school board in the state had to do this, not only this state, but throughout the country. It basically has to do with your participation in the state pension plan. Um, if the pension plan's assets are greater than liabilities, you recognize an asset based on your allocation and based on your participation in that plan. However, if the liabilities are greater than the assets, you have to recognize your portion of the liability. Uh, the bad news is, at the beginning of the year, you did have a liability, but the good news is, at the end of the year, there was an asset, as the state pension plan is very healthy as of June 30th, 2015. Just a few highlights I want to go over with on this year's financials. Unrestricted cash balances increased from 5.3 million last year to approximately 6.7 million at June 30th, 2015. Approximately $3 million in capital projects were transferred from construction in progress to in-service. Total liabilities decreased from approximately 2.6 million in 2014, uh, to, to 2.3 million in 2015. Uh, the town had an increase in net position of approximately $1.1 million in 2015. This compares to about $500,000 in 2014. The town has an unrestricted net position of $4.5 million at June 30th, 2015, comparing to $4 million in 2014. Long-term debt, after the restatement for the pension liability, decreased from 2.7 million in 2014 to just 2 million in 2015. Based on 2015 expenses, reserves, cash reserves the town has equals 383 days in 2015, so well over a year in reserves compared to only 246 days last year. The cost of operating the town in 2015 was approximately $17,500 a day compared to about 16,600 a day in 2014. Breakdown of how the expense, how the town spent its expenditures in 2015 compared to 2014. General government was about 28% of their expenditures, slightly up from last year. Public transportation was 41%, slightly down from last year. Uh, I mean, public safety, I mean, transportation was 11%. Economic and physical development was 2%. That's a new category, has to do with the Chatham Park development. Environmental protection was 10% and cultural recreational was 8%. Overall, the town's financials are very healthy for 2015. There should be a couple of letters with the packet. Uh, the first one, which has no date on top, is the SAS 114 communications letter, and this is when we're required to communicate to those charging governance how the audit went from our perspective. Having to report, we had complete cooperation, no difficulties encountered during the audit process, and no disagreements with management, what you call a pleasant audit from our perspective. The second letter is the management letter. Like I said, there's new findings in the financial statements, but there were some, I think, opportunities to improve internal controls mentioned in this letter. Uh, the first one was developing accounting procedures manual. This has been on this letter for a couple of years now. Uh, there has been some turnover in the finance officer's position, and we think it's a good idea to have an accounting procedures manual in place in case, you know, there is future turnover in that position. Canceling invoices. Uh, in order to have, avoid duplicate payments, we recommend that there be a procedure printed in place to cancel all invoices. Capital assets. Um, the town obviously has a good number of capital assets in place. We recommend that the inventory be performed to determine that all those assets are still owned by the town and still in working order. And if any are not in working order, that they'd be removed from the books. Personnel files, this is related to last year. It was approved in front, but we saw a couple of things that could be approved better. Uh, last year, there was no documentation of personnel files on pay rates or pay raises. That's been solved. We just recommend that those pay rate, pay increase forms be signed by supervisors. Other post-employment benefits, um, they're being calculated right now by the finance officer. They're immaterial to the financial statements, but as you progress, they may become material and have to get an actuary to perform an analysis on those benefits. That is all I have for this, tonight's presentation. I'll be glad to entertain any questions on how the audit went or the financials themselves.
I had just one question.
Yes.
First, excellent job for our staff. Thank you. Seems like this is a very good audit, as we've had in the past also. But one question on the reserve days. What is the minimum recommendation on the reserve days?
There's really no minimum recommendation. Um, when I, when I'm talking to people, I say you'd like to have at least three to six months of reserves. Um, a minimum of three is good. Your six would be great, and obviously, having over a year is outstanding.
Okay. I thought it was that the local commission has a special number that they went by, but that's, that's good.
Yeah, they say 8%. Uh, and we're well above that. We passed, as you recall, a policy that's, that puts us around 15 or 20.
It's closer to 20, I think, Brian.
So how that translates, how that translates to the number, the amount of time we would be able to operate if we didn't have any revenues coming in, it's, it's difficult for us to say, but, but if, if, if LGC requires us to be at eight months, I think, I think they were only looking at, you know, like, somewhere between one and three. I don't even think that's a three-month period we really were shooting for. So we're above that.
Right, that's good.
And that balance has increased the last three years.
Okay, sounds like all good news to me. Anybody got any, any other questions from the board? I mean, a lot of crap, but interesting, we'll get, when it's my highest, everybody will get a copy bound copy.
Yes.
LGC documents, so a little more to that. Okay. Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Item number two is, uh, let's see. County engineer Fred Royal's going to talk to us about our high-end project.
Good evening. Um, this project has been going very well, and as I reported last, last meeting, we discovered that we have more funds available from our loan balance for further find and fix procedures to figure out where all this darn storm mars coming from, getting to our wastewater plant. It's really beginning to be a, um, kind of a chronic problem for staff at the wastewater plant. Every time it rains, um, they gotta jump into action 24 hours a day. And it also means they have to change their procedures with bypassing the sand filters, et cetera. So we believe that it's, would be prudent to move forward and continue with our search, as it were, for, for other defects in our sewer system that are contributing to this chronic wet weather problem. And the fact that we have this loan, um, makes it all more important. So the state has agreed to moving our deadline down the calendar to February 1st, which was good news, and we have proceeded with engaging hydrostructures for this further work. Uh, it's called Exhibit 8 in your packet. It involves a couple of key scopes of work. The first one is flow monitoring in the system, which we haven't done in probably 10 years. That might be off by a few years, but this is more extensive monitoring. Uh, we, um, we initially looked at 15 monitors and we were trying to save costs and look at efficiency, so we got it down to 10 by looking at our entire system and finding specific manholes where we could capture flow from every sub-s sewer shed in town, essentially. And, um, the idea is we put these in place and we collect rainfall data as rainfall occurs over a 30-day period, and we'll have a report at the end of this with every, it monitors flow every 15 minutes. It's a digital read, so every monitor gives us data every 15 minutes. And then we compare that to rainfall data. They're going to install two rain gauges, so we'll know where the rain fell, how much fell, and at what intensity and duration, and compare that to the flow pickup in the sewer system to help us determine where do we move to do the more expensive video work to look for the defects. So that's step one. The other step is we want to go straight into smoke testing in the East Cornwallis area, which is an older system, and the Potterstone subdivision area. If, and that, that's about a two-day project. If the smoke testing reveals anything alarming, we'll definitely pay close attention to it, but we believe, um, there is a good reason that, we believe that there's some, something going on in that area. However, the flow monitoring will be a real key to finding out where we want to go to do this extensive survey with video, like we did on the Tumor Loop project. If it doesn't rain substantially in that 30-day period, which it could happen, uh, we can extend of some of the monitors time outward, uh, based on, um, some other monies we have kind of built into this project. But it is totally, it is a not-to-exceed project of $30,000, and we have another $10,000 available in case we need it. There's another leapfrogging we can do with monitors, like if we find one area that's like really a smoking gun, we can, we can leap some monitors up into that system to really close in on where the problem is. So we have some flexibility. We hope we get at least two really nice rainfall events between Thanksgiving and Christmas. That would be perfect, to get us data by early January, and then we can decide what to do from there. So Nancy has put together the budget amendment for the funding. This is not the first or last contract with anyone we're going to have to do, to do this. We, we'll have to go through bid and spec preparation, submit it to Deaner, or I'm sorry, DEQ. They would have to review it and approve it, and at that point, um, it would go to the local government commission for final approval of the loan. So once we get that, um, we would do the bidding, just like we would a contract for any job, do the bidding, um, take bids, schedule it, and get it on your way. So hopefully, we can do all that by June, July timeframe is our goal. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. So are we to be under construction in June? Is that what I, the report says?
That would be, that would be our goal.
Okay. So by February, is it to have design documents?
February 1st, we submit that to the state.
Okay.
Uh, we can ask them to expedite the review to the extent they can do that. They have up to, I think, three months, but we, we would like them to turn it around as quickly as possible. So it seems like June is a good guess for when we can have it wrapped up. I'd like to do it all tomorrow, but these things take time.
So you have some, you have some work that has already been identified, or is this the number one?
We do.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
You're hoping to find additional defects.
Correct. Yeah, we.
The mystery.
The mystery, yeah. Um, it continues to grow as well. We used to think it was within a quarter mile of the plant. Now we think it may be within a mile. So the, the area has expanded. Because the time it takes for the slug to get to the plant is a little longer than it used to be, so it seems like it might be coming from further away. Um, it's, it's not a simple fix. But the other good news is we've started working on our asset management plan and our prioritization tool, which is all going to be a technical tool we can use in GIS for future sewer rehabilitation prioritization, so we're not just throwing money out the door at one side or another. We're going to do some kind of a prioritization table that tells us where the highest priorities are for sewer rehab, given the fact that it's very expensive to fix.
And the amount of money that we have available in this loan is $200,000?
Well, the total loan amount's $494.5.
Okay. And we've already spent, what, $250,000?
No, we've only spent $30,000.
That was on the smoke test.
Right, on the smoke testing, and then WK Dixon's is, is also doing this other work, this asset management stuff. So between those two, right now, we've only spent $30,000, or we've only signed contracts for $30,000.
I think Commissioner Fieldgo is referring to the, uh, the previous or the initial sanitary sewer evaluation, uh, which provided a cost estimate of $250,000.
Yeah.
The first time around, but we didn't feel like that was cap, we didn't, we thought we could frankly, a little bit more of a comprehensive find and fix than that. This initial, this, this initial estimate came in at $250,000. Since we're, since we're approved for more, let's try to find, see if we can find more and then fix it.
Would we, if, for whatever reason this doesn't work out, do we have a contract with somebody to do this work at $257,000? Or are we going to wait and rebid everything?
Right. We decided to wait.
Okay.
Not pay hydrostructures a contract, not, not enter into a contract with hydro to do the bid spec packets for the $254,000. We decided to wait, which table that, do more research, figure out what else we can fix, put all that together with, with the Tumor Loop package that's estimated to be $257,499.
Got it. Okay. Got it. This, this thing's a lot clearer, more clear.
Sure.
Do we have an estimate, I think, for these other two items, two and three, smoke and flow data, perform expanded SSES, and then the, develop the bid and design package? I think those are two of the other contracts you're mentioning we'll have to execute. Do you have an estimate for those?
Well, I could base number two on what they did previously.
Okay.
Um, the previous contract amount.
$15,000.
Okay, so probably another 15 for an SSES. And they did give us a proposal for number three that we tabled, and that was 17,000. So we could probably figure a little more than that, I'm sure, with the scope going up, so. We're, we're thinking we're going to be starting to close in on 100,000, just in engineering and planning and plan spec before we turn one manhole lead over.
And that will not be, or will be eligible for reimbursement from the loan?
Will be.
Excellent.
Is, in fact, is.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I do have to comment on one thing. I really enjoyed the letter from, uh, is this from, is this from the local government commission, who renamed the town of Lake Pittsburgh.
That's my other town.
Doppelganger.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so if there are no further questions, what the staff has asked us to do, and I think we need a resolution, or a motion to authorize them to proceed and work in Exhibit A, and then we also need a motion to adopt the ordinance to admit the budget.
Question to proceed and work in Exhibit A? Second?
Second, okay. All in favor of approving the scope of work in Exhibit A?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, okay, that motion passes and you're authorized to proceed there. Next order of business would be the budget amendment, the new amount of $40,000 additional funds due to this additional, uh, research work, and a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed to the budget amendment? Item number three is, Jeff Jones is going to give us a report on where we are. We're, we're.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Wanted to give you a clear update on the UDO process. I know the last few meetings, Brian and staff has sort of given some updates as to, it's coming, it's coming. We were able to sit Roger down last week, both myself and Brian, and Paul Messick, and kind of give him, Roger gave us an update on various aspects of what we shall receive in December. So what Roger put together in the letter to the, to the town was, staff will receive the module, uh, the next, the next set of updates, um, which will be the Module 1, and that's going to cover the provisions, general provisions, the zoning districts, the youth standards, nonconformities, administrative and review authorities, development review procedures, enforcement and interpretations. Staff will receive that on the 7th, and Clarion, Roger will come and give an update to this board on the 14th. That's your next meeting. I have asked Roger today to update the UDO process website. We do have a website that informs the public on the, on what's going on with the UDO. Asked him or someone with Clarion to update that website with the, uh, the schedule. That staff will receive it on the 7th, and then a public unveiling on the 14th. He said he would do that. So I, I expect that in the next couple of weeks here, we shall receive something, and we'll go forth from there. See what we have. But we, we really wanted to be, give, give the board and the public a little bit clearer update on, on when that, that UDO, when the UDO was coming.
Great, thank you. See, you mentioned, that it mentions that, um, the draft will be posted also to the website you just mentioned?
Yes.
I think it'd be really important to put it on the towns as well, only because I don't think everybody's aware of that other website.
Yeah, it, the, the other website has a big link on the town's front page, but you're right, uh, we can, we can try to post a hyperlink on, on the town's website to that as well.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, any questions? We're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number four, Settles Road subdivision, one of the packets.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have a 10-lot subdivision that you all reviewed back in May timeframe of this year. It is for Chatham Park, it's along Settles Road, and it's going to include the, the Grant Drive Extension, Grant Drive into it, and Freedom Parkway. It covers, um, currently under construction, the Office Building 1 and 2. That is along Freedom Parkway and Grant Drive, and then the hospice facility that is located on Lot, um, 8.
That is along Freedom Parkway and Grant Drive, and then the hospice facility that is located on Lot Eight. Do want to, as I pointed out in the memo, there, there is a difference in the preliminary flat that was before you in May and what's before you tonight. The lot, the lot count is the same, ten lots, but Lot Ten is configured differently than what it was configured in, in the past. I've highlighted those in the, in the staff report. This was the exhibit that I, I put out, that lot, Lot Nine, it's configured a little bit differently. Ten was this lot down here, and then Lot Nine was here. What we have today is Lot Nine wrapped around the hospice park, and then Lot Ten consists of all this twenty-five acres here. The zoning, the subdivision ordinance allows for slight deviations to the plan as long as there's not a, a substantial change to, to the preliminary flat. I, I've looked at it, and I don't think this is a substantial difference. We still have the same acreage for, and the same lot count. I would, if we were adding lots, additional lots, that would be a substantial change. Thus, we'd have to go back through the preliminary flat process. I can answer any questions that the board may have, applicants here as well, and.
Any questions from the board? In the write-up, you mentioned that they changed this because of the requirements. Can you show us where that is?
They did.
Did you give them a frontage on that?
That's, that's, that's correct.
I was wondering how that affected, I guess that really doesn't affect that.
No.
Just technically meet the requirement to have a frontage on it. Any, any other questions?
I have a question that quite frankly just came to me. I don't think, I don't see figures on impervious surface limits on each individual lot, which I think is typical when they're sharing a stormwater device so that future site plans come in, people know what the expectations are, what the limits are, instead of trying to root out, you know, a stormwater impact analysis that's buried somewhere in somebody's files. I think that's pretty typical. And I don't think the numbers are in there. Is there a schedule, maybe there's a schedule?
Robbie?
I didn't see it. Okay.
Robbie Oden, Withers and Ravinale, One Fifteen, Kena Drive, Cary. Good question. It actually is on the schedule and the color overall exhibit that you see in the top left corner. And, and what we're doing, working with Fred and, and staff in tracking the impervious. So we do have a master spreadsheet that we're tracking the impervious by lot and by site plan, so.
But is that also on the, the plat that's getting rewarded?
It's not a plat, and I think it was decided that between staff that we, it's easier to track it with the, with the, you know, spreadsheet than actually having it on this, because we, you know, so take, for instance, Lot Ten. We don't know exactly what's going on there as far as the maximum impervious. So we will come in with a site plan, and then at that point, the overall master spreadsheet will be updated. So there's not a precise set limit for impervious on Track Ten other than your maximum seventy percent.
So the notification to the public is contact the town of Pittsburgh Engineering to understand?
I will defer to legal on that, so.
Because it, even it's recorded, it's available to everybody to know it. I know that the tracking part and horse trading, so to speak, can occur, I think, without updating the plat. So maybe that does.
And that's the reason, that once you record, you just have, you would end up re-recording it every time. So it is public information, and that is, you know, with the same, so, but that is the reason. Otherwise, you'd be continuing to update this plat.
Right, okay. My other question is, it mentions other documents that are attached that I did not receive. It makes mention that they're important or necessary for the final subdivision plat approval. And yet I don't have those, so I think I'm at a handicap trying to make an informed decision.
Yeah, I think there was a decision that we would, that the improvement agreement, subdivision improvement agreement, and stormwater agreement, and letter of credit, those have been worked out through legal and with the applicant, and maybe didn't need to come to this board.
Is there a bond for these devices?
Letter of credit, yes.
Letter of credit?
For all the subdivision improvements, not just the credit devices.
Right, that, so that's a performance bond, to actually.
Performance bond, yes.
Finish the improvements.
Yes, sir.
What about the bond for the ponds that I think is a requirement?
The stormwater agreement requires that the developer or an association created by the developer maintain the ponds. The town has the right to inspect and access to it. This has been designed on the basis that the association or property owners in there would be the ones responsible for the maintenance of the devices. There is no bond for maintenance. I'm not sure that the town can do that anymore. State law did away with letters of credit. And bonds for anything other than construction.
So if the homeowners association or the owners association fails to do this maintenance, is it not the town's responsibility to ensure that it's completed?
It will, it will be completed, but.
Well, that it is maintained, that it's functional.
Yes, sir, you will take an enforcement action against the people who are responsible.
And you would put a lien on the property?
No, you'd probably sue them to, to require them to maintain the devices.
As opposed to having a bond posted right now that the town has access to those funds without having to sue?
Yes.
Doesn't our ordinance require us to post, to collect a bond?
No, it's an option, but not required.
An option, okay.
I think would be my recommendation not to do that. I think Fred would agree.
Well, I think the master plan is requiring them to do, to post these, well, to have these monies in escrow and to publish that amount to the town periodically.
Well, the, the development agreement, I mean, the agreement that is ultimately done in terms of the covenants and on this will require the associat, the homeowners or the property owners association to maintain this. And it will require, just like the ordinance requires, that there be a sinking fund or some sort of fund available for maintenance. And the town will have access to review that and make sure it's done.
So the town will be aware of the fund balance for these purposes held by the private development community or the owners association?
I don't, I don't know about the fund balance. It's a private organization. I'm not sure the town has the right to know the balance. It knows that it has an obligation on the part of the property owners to maintain, and it can enforce that obligation. I'm not sure why the town needs to be involved in determining the amount of fund in a property owners association.
I think, I think for the reason of knowing whether or not it's sufficient to perform maintenance.
The town has the right to inspect it and see if it is being maintained.
And if it is not?
To enforce the obligation on the part of those responsible. It is not the town's responsibility to maintain these structures. It is the property owner's responsibility to maintain. You have the right to enforce people's obligations. It is not an obligation that you should assume yourself, or that the town should assume.
So did I understand you correctly say that there, the, the practice of requiring bond, maintenance bonds is no longer legal in state and county?
Depends on what the circumstances are, but no, you cannot require a bond for purposes of future maintenance for streets, for example. You can do it for construction, but not future maintenance.
So letters of credit bonds to ensure the infrastructure is initially built are still.
Yes, sir.
Standard, but bonds for maintenance are, are not, will overlap, I didn't realize that.
So if they are not compliant, then how do you make?
Looks like they're also sure, sure a precaution. Something in? Any other questions?
Do, good.
Staff recommendation is that we approve this final plat, the mayor motion to that.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being opposed, the Settles Road subdivision final plat is approved. For new business, item number one, consideration of appointments to the, for a town Pittsburgh representative to the Climate Change Advisory Committee, which is a committee that was established by, I believe, the Chatham County Board of Directors. Mr. Bruce Beck, want to add anything to that?
No, I indicated in my moment what the purpose of the committee was and what kind of pathways the county is on. Silver City will also be considering their participation and appoint them. So if you choose this evening to, first of all, you can't actually technically choose to opt out of it. But if you do choose to opt in, then it would be at your discretion to appoint a board member. And that board member to be one of your membership, or it could be, you know, she could just ask me to appoint someone, or you could just tell me to go. Really, the world is your oyster in this one.
Okay, one thing that occurs to me is that we're about to have some turnover on the board, and what are, what's the will of the board with respect to considering the mayor-elect is here, and the one commissioner-elect who wanted, who have in the pool of possible candidates to do this? Or do you want to choose from the existing board members or delegate it to the staff to do?
I think that Joe Bonnet had a background in this kind of thing, and I would like to add you to the board. Could you describe what your background has to do with it?
Certainly, well, thank you, Beth. I, I certainly have twenty years of environmental experience that gives me insights into the mitigation of climate change. And over the past eight years, I've been working in areas that have given me lots of insights into adaptation of climate change. And I was very encouraged by, to read, to read the memo from, from Mr. Bruce Beck. It looks like the county has really got a, a very good vision for this committee, and I'd be very pleased to play a role.
Okay.
I make that answer, Zach?
Yeah.
I don't see nobody else.
Nobody, nobody's up on the radio.
Wait a minute, I think Ryan says he wants to do it.
Well, it seems that we have a volunteer, and only one volunteer, but I have other volunteers.
No more wrestling.
Okay, well, I guess we can enter a motion to appoint Commissioner-elect Bonnet to the, to the Representatives on this Climate Change Advisory Committee. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Mr. Joe Bonnet says you're wide appointed. Okay, let's bring this to the managers, update on projects, other issues.
Thanks, I'll just try to give a brief, brief verbal. Future, I'll be writing these out, updating this, what we had there for a while. Another issue that's, I guess, similar in nature, not in similar nature to climate change, but kind of stemming from the orientation of, of the county board. You should recall from attending the joint elected officials meeting a few weeks ago, there was.
Turn the volume down.
It got worse when you walked over here.
What did you do?
I can't hear it.
All right.
Anything final?
You have that plugged, it's not only on.
I think the wall there.
It's in the wall.
The wall down there. Is this one, so is this one hot right here? Okay, well, when we were playing around with the wiring, we, we obviously did pull some things and create, created imbalance. And so we'll, we'll play around with that a little bit more, and hopefully we don't have that, that feedback. That could be fatal. You recall, where was I? You recall from the joint elected officials meeting that, that Chatham County, their board had some discussion on affordable housing, and I copied before you this evening the PowerPoint that I believe was, I believe was discussed at the joint elected officials meeting. I'm not intending to go through this again by any stretch of the imagination, but I thought you guys might find it helpful as, as we move forward. Silver City, I'm told, will be discussing issue and their participation. I think they had one or two board members at the meeting, joint elected officials meeting, so they're not as familiar with it. I think that could get off the speed. Following that discussion, I think that's taking place the first meeting in December. Following that discussion, then I expect to be meeting with the county manager and Silver City's town manager, and then talking about how, you know, what our roles with it will be. And I've also discussed, just that brief conversation with our town planner, because I think that there, there'll be some, some input from the planning departments as well. So this is, this is going to move, you know, this is going to move forward, I think, in one, in one way, shape, or form, and we'll keep you up to date on how that goes, and then I'll let you know when, when these, when these meetings are going to take place as they, as they happen, and be sure to check in with you as, as we receive information. LGC, we talked a little bit about LGC and, and the role with, with inflow and infiltration. The finance director and I had a telephone conversation with some, some LGC members on, on a few of our projects, mainly to, to try to get the lay of the land on what would be required and, and what sort of projects that they would be interested in knowing more about. And I think it was very, it was very helpful from our perspective, and I think from their perspective too, because as these things come down the pipe, they're going to need to be moving along in the learning curve with it as well. And so, so it was very helpful from, I think, everyone's perspective. We, it, it looks as if with regard to the wastewater treatment plan expansion and revolving loans, fund application that was submitted, we could be receiving some good news on that in January as a result of some feedback that, that we've had from our PBR consultant, the open company. I'm going to kind of hold off on giving all the gory details on that, so I actually have a letter in hand. So just stay tuned, stay tuned with that. Traffic Circle, they took, took your comments from the previous meeting with regard to any proposed improvements that came as a result of the visioning process at the Traffic Circle in the downtown. And staff had a meeting with Kim Lee Horn, who is DOT's consultant on the project. I think that the next step will be a meeting between Kim Lee Horn and DOT to discuss some of, some of the outlines. And then finally, the only other thing I would mention too is that all reports are that the, that the holiday tree lighting from last night went quite well, and the, I'm just trying to show a picture here.
I guess the lights weren't on the same? Really?
The lights were on in the?
On the tree. Was that going to be turned on at that?
I can find out, I wasn't aware of that. So this was, so this was, I, I think, Chief, did Delaney take this picture?
No, I think that was somebody took it from the balcony.
Yeah, right after the light. Yes, that was, no, then there's a view, there's a view of the tree there, I think from the other side of the circle, so. By all accounts, it, and I'm just speaking from a pointy headed staff perspective here. I think some of, some of our initial concerns going into this was, of course, you know, and I'm speaking on behalf of Chief Pruchfield, some of our concerns going into this was, was probably maintaining safety, pedestrian and traffic movement around the circle as, as the tree was, was being let, because I think, you know, we expected a crowd, we didn't, I, frankly, I'm not sure that we expected quite that many people, which is one of those good problems, probably. So I think next year, we, we might, assuming this moves forward, next year, we might consider some other options, and we'll be checking in with that. But I think the, the model that Chief came up with to reduce the traffic flows to one lane seemed to be working quite well. You haven't heard of any problems. So, so anyway, again, good times had by all. Thank you very much for everyone's role in helping this put together, and it's great to see people downtown in, at different times of the year, and it doesn't always have to be for one singular event, or the same old event, or whatever, it's always nice to come up with new ones and have them be successful, and frankly, that's not hard to do when you have a downtown like ours, so. With that, I will tap out and open it up for any other concerns or questions you might have.
Do you have anything to report about their Christmas program? Like, what are we doing?
No, I'll find out a little bit more about the details on that tomorrow. Pretty much, you know, some of the basics, we, working with, working with Paul, we have a, we, we have a different setup from last year. We wanted to ask you guys how, how you wanted to, how you wanted to move along, if you agreed whether you wanted to walk and so forth. We have candy, but we probably need more candy, but I can, I'll certainly back with you on that a little bit, I needed to talk a bit more with Paul on that.
Are you going to do the line?
Sorry.
Never a question.
You were outbid.
That's right.
We have the, the gun, he usually does.
I'm not sure about that.
No.
It sounds like it's unresolved at this point.
Well, yeah, the guy that used to do it, I mean, if we're talking about the guy who used to do it, he can't do it anymore.
He's passed away.
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver passed away, so it must've?
Okay, any other questions for the manager? Last update, okay. Let's see here. Well, EDC, I don't have any, any updates for that, other than that, that, that meeting other than, so I was, you had, OPO, anything?
Not, haven't had a meeting in the interim, but there is a new division engineer, recently appointed, his name is Brandon Jones. Don't know him, but want to welcome him. He is the division engineer that's over Chatham County, so look forward to working with him, we've got lots to work with him on.
Fairgrounds? Downtown Business Association?
I was questioning the fairgrounds, how did the, the, I think the festival, yeah, I think it was like the, the, that.
PBA, well, I'll just say, echo what Mr. Bruce Beck just said, is, you know, they did a fantastic job in organizing this, pulling it off, having lots of volunteers involved, so. Of course, staff did a great job as well, traffic control was spot on, everybody was, I think, safe, felt safe, so it was a great job by everybody. And they have another event on the 19th, which is the Miracle on Hillsborough Street and Santa's on trial. I forget what time it is, but I know it's on the?
Two, two, three, four, yeah.
I want the record to show we're not helping with that, I don't want to be the cop that arrests the Santa.
The 19th, please. PBA, please. And on posters, I think, around town, yeah. Judd Bedore will, in his robe, performing the sentencing.
He has a theater background.
Anyways, I think the PBA's doing a great job with the holidays festivities.
I would agree. Everybody's having a great time down there, a great turnout.
What kind of things were on during the festival?
Well, let's see, Santa was in one of the salons, and on, there was a line at the door with a kid sitting, chatting.
I'll use.
Hot chocolate.
It was sweet.
And, ah, corals.
Corals from, from fourth, they walked back to fourth.
That was a good, it was a really good event. It was huge crowd, enormous, all the way up and down the street.
Okay, that's it for now, we'll go into Commissioner's concerns, Mr. Shapiro.
Just want to echo what Michael and Brian said, good job, Chief with the traffic and all, Nancy also with the audit, it sounded like we're heading in the right direction. Just one other thing, I want, Mr. Bruce Beck, you, regarding divisions downtown, I really want to stress that make sure that we lose no parking. Absolutely not one single place of parking we will afford to give up for a shrubbery or curbing or anything. I want to stress that, and I'll probably try to get a couple in the future here in the future. And that's all I got, thank you.
Another thing I have is I was contacted by a resident of Power Flakes who was concerned about, there's a newly built house on Power Flakes Lane, and after the heavy rain, there was red clay apparently rushing down the street, and the builder had not done what they were supposed to. I don't know if I can bring it up, but I asked them a lot to Mr. Bruce Beck, it seemed, luckily the, the clay just ran into the holding pond, not going to break or anything, but anyway, just a call, just a mention of that.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Thank you for? Okay. If there's no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, we adjourn.
Never mind, I told you I wanted to stick fast, I think I'll keep you on.
I'm doing good.